Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to this educational event on the first day treatment from the European perspective. So I would like to very happily invite you for the three excellent presentations from two well-known speakers and myself. And this event has been funded by Gilead Sciences Europe, but they didn't have any involvement in the design, development, or delivery of the content. So the first speaker is Dr. Paul Sax, who is clinical director of infectious diseases and HIV at Harvard Medical School. He's also section editor of, from the HIV and AIDS perspective in the Up Today portal and editorial board in name, Journal Watch of Infectious Diseases, and also one of the core faculties of International AIDS Society USA. Dr. Sax is very well acknowledged in the field of clinical trials of antiretrovirals, cost efficacy, management strategies for HIV, including toxicity, and evolution of antiretroviral therapy. So I would like you to, I would like to invite you for this first presentation, first day treatment, definition, and review of the data by Dr. Paul Sax. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dr. Paul Sax, and thank you for joining us today as I review first day treatment, definition, and review of the data. So this is a 32-year-old man who was recently seen in our practice. He was initially seen by his primary physician with several weeks of fever, poor appetite, new skin rash, and difficulty swallowing. He also reported a 10-kilogram weight loss over the last several months. He had a past history of herpes zoon four years ago, but unfortunately had not been HIV tested at that time. That was a real missed opportunity. He moved from Thailand to the United States four years ago. He lives with his male partner, and he does report no prior HIV tests. On examination, he was chronically ill appearing with a temperature of 38.6 Celsius, oral thrush, and several numular skin lesions that looked like psoriasis. So this is the way he looked when he was in our outpatient clinic. So we had oral thrush, and then these psoriatic plaques scattered around his skin. So the laboratory tests available for us that day were as follows. His white count was low at 3,100. His kidney function was normal. His liver tests were normal, except for an elevated alkaline phosphatase, and his HIV screen was positive. His HIV viral load, his CD4 cell count, his hepatitis serologies, and his HIV resistance genotype were all sent, and we did not have those results. So the question for consideration here right now is, would, when would we start him on HIV treatment? Obviously, he has advanced HIV disease and needs therapy. And then the second question is, what would you start? So there is experience with so-called rapid start in the United States. This is a program that began in San Francisco that they call Rapid, which is basically same-day art initiation, including the seeing an HIV provider, getting labs done, and counseling, and then boom, go ahead and start the antiretroviral therapy. What they've been able to do is show that over time, with this program, they've been able to get people more rapidly virologically suppressed. Initial goal was to do this both for the health of the individual and to reduce the spread of virus to others. So when you look at this Kaplan-Meier curves, the figure right here, these are historical controls, and you can see that the fastest time to viral suppression is indeed in this people who have the rapid start. So that's compared to a universal art guidelines, which were adapted by San Francisco in the early 2010s, and then the history of the CD4-guided art. Of course, that's ancient history at this point. So one important thing to mention about this rapid start program, and here's some follow-up, is that this is a very difficult-to-treat patient population that includes a high proportion of individuals who have underlying psychiatric disease or substance use disorder, and also a large proportion of individuals with inconsistent housing. Nonetheless, they've been able to achieve very high rates of virologic success. Over 95% have at least one HIV RNA less than 200, and this is sustained years later, and this is undoubtedly due to an increased use of integrase-based regimens. The other thing that's very interesting is that they have not had to have substantial changes based on any of the baseline laboratory tests that have not been back yet when they initiate antiretroviral therapy. I'm going to mention now a meta-analysis that looks at randomized trials of initiating ART right away and compares them to standard of care. Now, most of these studies were done in resource-limited settings, but I think they have some applicability to those of us treating patients in developed countries as well. What the figure shows is that overall, the rapid start group is associated with an increased likelihood of ART initiation, certainly, retention and care, certainly, and also viral suppression, as well as a decreased likelihood of loss to follow-up, and at least in some studies, a decreased risk of dying, which is really very, very impressive. I remember the first time I saw these data, they came from Haiti, that they actually had to stop the study early. It was rapid start versus standard of care, and the rapid start arm actually had improved survival. There's also data that starting right away reduces the size of the HIV reservoir in individuals, and this is potentially very useful if you imagine in the future when we have curative interventions for HIV. Undoubtedly, those of the, those who have a lower HIV reservoir will, will be more amenable to HIV cure strategies. So what this has done is this has led to an alteration in the guidelines for when to start antiretroviral therapy. So it's emerging as the strategy of choice to reduce loss to follow-up and to decrease time to viral suppression. In the Department of Health and Human Services guidelines, they say it's recommended at the time of diagnosis, when possible, or soon after. They do acknowledge that it's resource-intensive, and that the observational, the data supporting this in the United States at least come from observational studies, not randomized studies. WHO says something similar. ART is recommended for all people with HIV, including same-day, if the patient is ready to start. Now, the International Antiviral Society USA has just recently updated its guidelines hot off the presses, and they report, they state, "Start antiretroviral therapy as soon as possible, including immediately after diagnosis if the patient is ready." And I just want to put a call out to our published guidelines. It has sort of a funny name. It says "International," and it also says "USA." I think that's because most of the people on this panel are from the United States, but it does include some representatives from Europe as well. So what do specifically we say in these guidelines? Initiate ART as soon as possible after diagnosis, including immediately, rapid, or same-day start if the patient is ready. Remove any structural barriers that delay antiretroviral therapy in particular. At least in our country, it would be insurance coverage, but it may be different for some, some other places. In the setting of starting active opportunistic infection treatment, perhaps one should delay a bit. Now, it says within two weeks for most opportunistic infections, with some exceptions, tuberculosis within two to eight weeks. Remember, there are important drug interactions with tuberculosis, in particular with rifamycin. And then the data are probably strongest for delaying with active cryptococcal meningitis. You'll recall from our case that our patient did not have any symptoms consistent with cryptococcal meningitis, but as we all know, there are occasionally cases where people are asymptomatic, and I think a baseline cryptococcal antigen makes sense when people with advanced HIV disease are diagnosed. So what information must you have before starting antiretroviral therapy? Well, the patient has to be ready to start. On examination, they don't have any evidence of active cryptococcal meningitis that may warrant a short delay, or any other AIDS conditions that really, really require therapy before ART can be started. It also makes sense to counsel on medication adherence, although what we have found, and I'm sure you've experienced the same thing, is that medication adherence counseling, most of the time, does not need to be very lengthy. People understand the benefits of antiretroviral therapy, and usually, they're very eager to get started. You don't need to convince them. So what's not needed: CD4 cell count, HIV viral load, HIV genotype, resistance test results, hepatitis results, HLA-B571 status, STI screening results, and pregnancy results. None of these is really required prior to starting antiretroviral therapy, although they all, all are potentially very good to know. Many of them are really critical to know what the baseline is, but not for starting ART. So what are the specific regimens in our guidelines? Well, they have, they share certain characteristics. Looking at DHHS guidelines, they say, "Use a bictegavir or dolitegavir-containing regimen along with tenafavir (FTC) as its nucleoside combination." They also include the darunivir-cobasistat or darunivir-ritanivir-ba boosted regimen. And what these regimens all have in common is that they have high resistance barriers, and that transmitted resistance is extremely unusual. You'll note that both the DHHS and the ISUSA guidelines cite NRTI-transmitted resistance as a reason not to use NRTI-based regimens for initial or rapid ART. The ISUSA recommendations are more streamlined, and they recommend either a bictegavir or dolitegavir-based initial regimen, and darunivir-based regimens are considered as alternatives. And we do have some prospective data on rapid start. Now, with all the caveats that these rapid start studies have, some of the artificiality of being studies. And the first of these that we received was the Diamond Study, and it looks at single-pill darunivir-cobasistat FTC TAF for rapid ART initiation. It included 109 participants. It was a single-arm study. Everybody got the same regimen, and the really inclusion criteria only were basically that people were over 18 and diagnosed with HIV within the last two weeks. Primary endpoint was at week 48. And interesting to look at the baseline characteristics, it was a predominantly male population, median age 28. It was racially diverse. How advanced disease did they have? 25% had a viral load greater than 100,021%, of the CD4 cell count less than 200. Fascinating, always to look at transmitted drug resistance. What's been true in the United States, and I believe Europe for some time right now, is transmitted proteus inhibitor resistance, transmitted tenafavir resistance, and transmitted integrase inhibitor resistance are exceedingly rare. Did not happen in anyone in this study. There was one patient, so that's less than 1%, who had transmitted FTC resistance, so M184V. But, look at this, 28% had transmitted NRTI resistance. That's actually much higher than I expected. Actually, that's 28 out of 109. Oh, and then if we look at the, I'm sorry, if we look at the results, you can see that overall, it was a highly successful intervention. Looking at the FDA snapshot, which counts lost to follow-up as failures or discontinuations for other reasons as failures, out at week 48, you had about 79% who were virologically suppressed, but the observed, meaning the on-treatment success rate, was 96%, which is really excellent. And there was nobody in this study who had developed a significant, who developed resistance. There's another study that just came out. It was called the STAT study, and here it's dolitegavir-lumivudine. Remember, this is not recommended for people who, for rapid start in any of the guidelines. So really, the investigators here wanted to test the hypothesis that they could do this safely with this two-drug regimen. So before, people had baseline assessments with Hep B genotype, it's viral load, CD4, they were able to start dolitegavir-lumivudine. And, and by week 24, there were a bunch of people who either had to adjust their treatment or they had to discontinue. And the reasons for ART adjustment were what you'd expect. So some people had baseline hepatitis B, and so they had to discontinue, because remember, you need to use tenafavir for your regimens in hepatitis B. Some had transmitted M184V, actually only one did, and some just decided they did not want to participate. But overall, most were able to continue. And the results are shown here. Again, the on-treatment success rate was very high, 87%. 74% using the, the FDA snapshot analysis. Overall, continued, this is considered a successful study because really, there was nobody who developed resistance-associated mutations. And also, I should mention that baseline, I should have mentioned this in the previous, previous slide, the baseline, significant fraction of these participants had viral loads greater than 100,000, and some had viral loads greater than 500,000, which, as you recall, was an exclusion criteria from the dolitegavir-lumivudine-geminoid studies. So which brings us to an observational study from a Chicago-based HIV practice, looking at people engaging in care from a little less than a year, from January 2018 to March 2019. 241 with rapid start, getting started within 14 days of diagnosis. Median start for them was 3.1 days. A high proportion started bictegavir FTC TAF, which has become a very common default regimen for rapid start in our country. And then there were some who delayed treatment a bit, and even among those, about 85% bictegavir FTC TAF. And you'll see the baseline characteristics of the people in this study in the, in the table. So here are the results. Overall, 90% of the people who had rapid start and were on bictegavir FTC TAF had successful treatment, and 90% who had delayed treatment. And the median time from the date of diagnosis to the time of viral suppression was only 60 days for the rapid start, and it was 95 days for the delayed start. So this has led to a prospective study called BEHAST, clever, which is looking at bictegavir FTC TAF in same-day treatment evaluations. It's a randomized study, where people are going to be randomized to start right away without a lot of baseline information or to do a standard of care. It's 50 in each study arm. This is registered in clinicaltrials.gov, and I think that one could say this is highly likely to be successful, since, as we know, bictegavir is one of those regimens with a high resistance barrier and encouragingly, very little transmitted resistance. So just some things to worry about the risks of rapid ART. You don't want to miss someone who has underlying TB or cryptococcal disease. Bictegavir is not a good drug for people with tuberculosis because of the rifamycin/bictegavir interaction. Obviously, severe renal or kidney disease might warrant some changes or need to be stabilized. There is a small risk that people might feel coerced into taking ART if you force them to start ART on the first day, but what I've known, I've observed that most people are eager to start on the first day. And then there are issues about women of childbearing potential. You may want to discuss this in further detail with them. But overall, I would say, starting ART really does have many advantages. Increases the likelihood of linkage. It's safe, it's well tolerated. Our regimens are so good now. It leads to faster viral suppression and may reduce the risk of transmission to others, reduce the, reduce the risk of loss to follow-up, improve retention, improve viral suppression. And that generally, we do recommend for these rapid starts, high resistance barrier regimens, second-generation integrase inhibitors, bictegavir and dolitegavir, or darunivir. We don't have a lot of data yet on people with prep failures, but good news is, we don't have anybody who's developed integrase or darunivir resistance with this strategy so far. So let me just wrap up by telling you what happened with our case. He was started on bictegavir FTC TAF, one pill daily, counseled about medication adherence. He was very adherent. He also received fluconazole for oral thrush, trimethrom sulfamethoracin for pneumocystis prophylaxis, and topical steroids for his psoriasis. His baseline labs showed, not surprisingly, he had advanced HIV-related immunosuppression with a CD4 cell count of 10, a viral load of 180,000, no transmitted drug resistance, and no evidence of chronic Hep B. He has tolerated the regimen well, and as we often see with integrase-based regimens, he achieved viral suppression very rapidly. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your attention and show you a beautiful picture of Boston in the autumn. I hope you can come visit again soon, once the pandemic is over. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sax, for this wonderful presentation. I would like to urge you to ask questions. Presentation was excellent, loaded with data, so we will answer all the questions at discussion time point quarter to five. So now, I would like to move back to Europe and ask Professor Margaret Johnson to speak on the implementation on the first day treatment from the Western European perspective. Professor Johnson is clinical director of Royal Free Center for HIV Medicine, and also professor of HIV medicine in University College of London. She's primarily involved in the care and guidelines on the women. So she's managing HIV infection among women. She was appointed first HIV physician in the UK. Also, she is a member of British HIV associations, association, which she chaired from 2004 to 2008, and active member, writing guidelines on the management of women in HIV. So Professor Johnson, welcome, Western perspective.
So thank you for that kind introduction. I'm going to be talking about the Western European perspective and focusing on the UK. So if we look at the number of people newly diagnosed with HIV in the UK, 1998 to 2018, the number has reduced. In 2004, you had around 8,000 people newly diagnosed, while in 2018, the numbers were down to just under 5,000, and the numbers in 2019 have fallen a little bit further again. Now, if we look at, on this next sub-slide, the setting of where newly diagnosed adults are diagnosed, and what we see in the UK, the most people are diagnosed in hospital settings, so either in sexual health clinics, the antenatal clinic, hospital wards, the A&E department, or outpatients, and small numbers, and diagnosed in primary care. If we, though, however, look at different patient populations, injecting drug users, only 42% of them are diagnosed in sexual health clinics, while if we look at gay men, 75% are diagnosed in sexual health services. And our sexual health services are very well set up to deal with immediate treatment, if that's needed. But in many of the other settings, patients will have to be referred into sexual health or HIV clinics, and although most clinics will have rapid access, it may not always be on the same day. On our next slide, if we look at antiretroviral coverage in the UK, and again, this is data from 2009 to 2018, we've seen a great improvement in patients receiving treatment. In 2009, only 82% of patients were, with an HIV diagnosis, were on therapy, but by 2018, that had increased to 97%, well above the WNHO-UNA target. When we look at the proportion of patients receiving antiretroviral therapy, again, you can see here that actually, across all groups, so all genders, age group, ethnicity, exposure group, and region, had antiretroviral treatment undetectability of over 90%. But the two groups that I want to focus on, who underperformed, were the young 15- to 24-year-old age group, which was only 95%, and injecting drug users, 96%. So perhaps highlighting a individuals which may need greater support. So when we look at the proportion of new HIV diagnosed, starting treatment within three months of exposure by group, this is data, again, from the UK, from 2014 to 2018. Then the top left, what you can see is the proportion, starting treatment within three months, with a CD4 count over 350, and seeing that a much higher proportion of black African heterosexual women and gay and bisexual men started treatment rather than people who inject drugs and black African heterosexual men. We see a very similar picture for those patients presenting late with a CD4 count less than 350, but certainly doing better than those presenting earlier. When we look at age diagnosis, we see that it is the younger age group that underperforms when compared to the older patients. Having said that, when we look at the proportion of people with antiretroviral therapy with a viral load that's undetectable by age group in the UK, in 2018, we see across all age groups that patients are reaching, or almost reaching, the 90% target. But again, it is that younger age group that are underperforming compared to the older When we look at our key recommendations when start antiretroviral therapy, all our guidelines really come up with the same advice, and that is, is that ART should be started as soon as possible after HIV diagnosis, and that includes immediately after diagnosis if the patient is ready to commit to treatment. But we must make sure that we have structural barriers that delay the receipt of ART can be removed to allow newly diagnosed patients to receive antiretroviral therapy at that first clinic visit, if appropriate. And ART needs to be started for most opportunistic infections within two weeks of diagnosis. I think there's a lot of debate about when to start antiretroviral therapy, on, on the basis that what we want to make sure is that when the patient is ready to start, that there is the availability to do so, and that in, that this should be, can be either immediate or same-day antiretroviral therapy, starting on the day of diagnosis or the first clinic visit when they need to be referred in the setting where HIV treatment is not available. I think that there is also the view that what may be equally, or, you know, maybe more suitable for some patients with rapid ART, which is initiation of treatment within seven days of diagnosis. So I think that when it comes to thinking about whether starting treatment immediately, delaying a short period of time, I think that one has to think about a number of different issues. Starting treatment immediately on the day of HIV diagnosis will mean that you're going to have to choose an antiretroviral therapy regimen when you have only limited information. You won't have an HIV viral load, you won't have the result of the resistance test, you won't have an HLA-B5701, which excludes using bacavir as part of that regimen, and you don't either have a hepatitis B status. I think that that very much, you know, leads you to have to think about a treatment regimen, which will have a high barrier to resistance. You won't have the results of the viral load, so I think one would have to be cautious in terms of thinking about using a two-drug regimen. And in this setting, I would always want to start with a three-drug regimen. You may not have other information in terms of a full list of the patient's other medication. You need to make sure that you have access to bought from the pharmacy to make sure that drugs are available. There needs to be staffing in place to address not only the medical needs, but also the emotional support that patients may need, and practical support around whether patients have adequate housing, and access to resources to pay for food, and also access to emotional support in terms of counseling or clinical psychology. I thought a good way to think about how to manage new diagnosed patients and whether immediate starting of antiretroviral therapy was appropriate, was to think about three cases that I've seen over the last month or two, where we've had very different decisions about starting therapy. So I'm going to start with my first patient, who's a 32-year-old man who attended our local STI clinic for routine STI screen, including an HIV test with his new including an HIV test with his new partner. This was a new relationship. He was found to be HIV positive and his partner was found to be HIV negative. He'd had an HIV test six months ago and at that time he was HIV negative. And clearly, his concern was that this is recent HIV infection and that he needs to start treatment sooner rather than later. I wanted to discuss treatment and wanted to discuss whether it was possible to start on treatment today. He also had quite clear views about what treatment he would want to start. He said that he wanted to think about starting on a two-drug regimen because he read that this was now good information to say that this was possible to reduce potential long-term toxicity. The discussion that I had with him was that I thought that it was important that as we didn't have a baseline viral load and that I might think that he might well have a very high viral load, that he would be much better to start on the three-drug regimen. I also discussed that I thought that it would be important for him to start on one of the second generation integrase inhibitors because of the ability, because of getting the viral load down quickly, but also having a high barrier to resistance. And this patient, at the end of the consultation, was keen to start treatment and started on a three-drug inste regimen. We've seen back in the clinic enough later and we've reported viral loads were undetectable. The second patient that was a challenge was a twenty-nine year old patient who was sent to my HIV clinic from our antenatal clinic. She was a late booker. She was found to be twenty-seven weeks pregnant and as part of her antenatal screen had undergone an HIV test. She never had an HIV test previously and was clearly absolutely devastated by the results and the implications that that might have for her pregnancy. She did have quite significant medical problems from the point of view of her pregnancy. She was hypertensive, she had some mild ankle edema. And the concern of the obstetrician was that she may go into early labour and concerned about getting her viral load down as fast as possible. She did have a past history of depression and anxiety. And the concerns was that she was a single mother, but did say she had close family support. I think she was rather overwhelmed by all the information she had to take in that day and said that she would be willing to take treatment, that she needed to go away and just think about things. In fact, she came back the next day, having discussed with her mother and also a couple of friends. And was very keen to get on and start treatment. So an example of on the day wasn't the best option for her, but having talked things through, came back immediately to start on treatment. And the third patient I wanted to discuss was a forty-two year old patient. Single man, works in a very high pressure job as a lawyer. He presented with shingles. His GP had seen him, started him on some valacyclavir, which had quite likely identified, but he needed to have an HIV test as a possible cause for his shingles. Shingles was very painful, he was on a lot of analgesia. He was also having difficulty sleeping at night, he was taking some sleeping tablets. When the HIV diagnosis came back, he was referred into the clinic. And on that day, we started to talk about treatment. He very clearly took a view that he had a lot on his plate at the moment. He didn't like taking multiple drugs, he was concerned about multiple drug interactions. He also wanted to think about his options. He wanted to have more information as to whether he had any baseline antiretroviral resistance. He really wanted to look at all his options and didn't feel today was the right time to start. And indeed, went away and a couple of weeks later, when his pain was much better controlled, he was keen then to start treatment, which I think was the time that was correct for him. So I think in summary, every patient has different needs. And I think it's very important to be able to give patients options and to be clear that one size doesn't fit all. I think in the UK at the moment, we have that flexibility. And I think that we, you know, clearly, you know, from the results of our patients on antiretroviral therapy and the percentage of our patients who are undetectable, I think that this flexible approach works well for us. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Johnson. And the third presentation is mine actually, on the Thursday treatment in Europe from the CEE perspective. I'm József Barczewski from Pomeranian Medical University, Szczecin, Poland. I'm an ID specialist and also highly interested in clinical virology. I'm currently heading Polish Scientific AIDS Society. So before we begin, I strongly, strongly recommend you to fill in the question form and ask us questions for the subsequent discussion. So the third presentation on the CEE perspective on the Thursday treatment.
Thank you for your kind introduction. I would like to speak about the implementation of the Thursday treatment in Europe from the central and eastern perspective. And if we look at the data from the epidemiological point of view, you can note that actually sixteen percent of people who are diagnosed with HIV live in the Western Europe, four percent in the centre, while eighty percent in the east. So the significant number of infections are being diagnosed in the central and eastern Europe. If we look at the European region and the card coverage target in Europe, you can see that the red arrows represent central and eastern Europe. So you can see that most of this region is below the target. And if we try to compare the card coverage target between the west, centre and the east, you can see the decreasing trend from ninety-one through seventy-three to forty-six percent with actually quite wide ranges for each region. And at the first look, when we look at the virologic efficacy across the region and across Europe, our, for example, Polish experience says that ninety-five percent of people who are on treatment are undetectable. So the data look very, very nicely. But if we would like to take a look at the percentage again of the people who meet this virologic suppression target, again, you can see that majority of central and eastern Europe are below the target with the numbers being below the average. So the west is ninety-three percent, centre seventy-five and east seventy-eight. And please take a look at the differences by the route of transmission. MSM is obviously the most adherent and the best diagnosed group in all the regions. So the virological suppression targets are met there quite nicely. But people who inject drugs are worse, especially in the centre and in the east. So here, there is a huge problem of meeting the virological suppression target. And if we would like to look at the patterns of suboptimal linkage and treatment across Europe, you can see that this gap of number of people who are diagnosed but not treated is increasing from the west, from the centre to the east. So this is also quite important data. And now we know that in the last years, there has been a shift in the policies. Most of the countries are not initiating based on CD four count. So there is an initiation regardless of the CD four count almost for all the countries. And average time between confirmed HIV diagnosis and start of treatment in majority of countries used to be within one month. And this gap is now shortening. So people are looking for the one week, two week from diagnosis treatment. So this is where we are heading also in the central and eastern Europe. And obviously, the guidelines in the most of central and European countries are consistent with EAG's guidelines. And generally, across all the recommendations for Europe, the initiation of antiretroviral treatment is recommended irrespective of CD four count with focus on immediate, immediate card initiation based on the people with lower CD four count, pregnant women and with primary HIV infections. We must though think about the special populations, especially in the context of central and eastern Europe, especially tuberculosis, for which I will come back in a second. So obviously, if we want to think about the immediate treatment in the CEE context, we have to think about various issues. So the approach to close up the gap between HIV diagnosis linkage to that and ART initiation. So we have the balance between efficacy, meeting the U equals U targets of a shorter time for the initiation, the shorter time for reaching the target of undetectability, less resource involvement. So this is especially important in the current era of COVID. And on the other hand, what do we sacrifice? We sacrifice higher numbers of people who will be lost to follow up. We sacrifice the issues with migrants which might not understand truly the necessity of treatment and need to discuss it, especially from the family point of view. And we also think about the stigma that we do not deal with these issues significantly well if we initiate the same day of very, very early treatment. And obviously, from the perspective of people who take drugs, we sometimes are not sure if all the drugs who people take are safe in the context of antiretroviral use. Obviously, in central and eastern Europe, there is a higher percentage of females among HIV populations. So there is a higher need for family discussions, there is the issues with acceptance of diagnosis and there are issues with depression and psychology, especially in the aging. So this is between mental disorders, cognitive disorders and disease acceptance. So if you would like to look at the EAGs and for example, Polish Scientific AIDS Society treatment guidelines, you can have various options where you could initiate the treatment on the same day. And we claim that optimal time as soon as feasible. So we base on the feasibility, not on the lab results which need to be taken. And please take a look, but obviously, EAG has some statements on the genotypic drug resistance, where you should wait, where you should not wait, where we should focus on the same day rapid treatment. So the focus is on the patient, not on the treatment. So sometimes the approach for the immediate treatment is better, sometimes it's slightly better to wait. But in the context of early diagnosis and the recommendation, we have majority of people from the east and from the centre being diagnosed late, especially among the heterosexual populations and especially among the injection drug users. So you can also see that, for example, in our country, the probability of a late care entry has slightly decreased over the last fifteen years. But it's still, late care entry is still above fifty percent of people. An advanced HIV disease where you have AIDS or parallel, CD four count below two hundred is seen in approximately forty-five percent of people who enter the care. So this is something which is actually quite important from the perspective of immediate treatment initiation. On one hand, we will want to initiate the treatment in these populations very, very early. On one hand, we need to think about the possibility of opportunistic infections and drug-drug interactions. So the same-day treatment in these populations will be based on the assessment of the risk of opportunistic infection and the necessity to possible adjust of possible adjustments of the treatment if the need arises from the DDI perspective. And if we would like to look at the transmission categories, you can see that late diagnoses in MSM and heterosexual are more or less stable. And you could also see that heterosexual populations are generally diagnosed late. And we have actually quite unfortunate trend among our injection drug users where the late care entry numbers or frequencies increased in the last, in the last years. And when we think about the Thursday treatment, we obviously have to think about the opportunistic infections. And from our central and European perspective, tuberculosis will be the key. And obviously, we know about the delays related to tuberculosis, tuberculosis, or CMV disease. But please remember and please be aware, so I just try to reemphasize this point, which may be the hindrance towards the same-day implementation. But actually, there is a strong gradient from the west to the east of the numbers of tuberculosis in the central and eastern Europe. And also, if we would try to revise proportion of people who are diagnosed with TB among AIDS diagnosed in Europe, majority of the countries where you have TB plus AIDS will be from the central Europe. And obviously, it will be the most common opportunistic infection in the east regardless of the transmission route. So you can see that it is a problem in the context of the same-day implementation of the treatment. On the other hand, there is a huge discussion on the resistance. So should we do resistance? Should we not do resistance? Should resistance matter in the context of the same-day treatment initiation? And please take a look. Thirdly, there is basically no transmitted integrase resistance. So these are again, our data where we had only E one hundred and fifty-seven polymorphisms, quite common. But we know that these do not significantly affect the treatment efficacy for especially second wave integrase inhibitors. So here, bictagrevir, dalutegravir will work very nicely. Alveitegravir will work as well, but you have to watch for the accumulation of other mutations. And we know that this mutation in our region was associated with female gender injection drug use and hepatitis C coinfection, which is a surrogate marker for IDU. So we know that from the perspective of integrase resistance, same-day treatment initiation is not an issue. So we don't really need to wait for the genotypic test results. On the other hand, there is some resistance to rilpivirin from four to five percent. So here, you would have to think whether this option would be the best to initiate very, very rapidly. Thirdly, just moving away from the resources which we need to use for the genotyping, you need to think about the possibility to make the test and receive the result within the reasonable timeframe. So this is what has been happening in the context of COVID recently. We know that quarantine for contact, flights delay and clinics have not been working normally. Only thirty percent of clinics have been working fully. So the patients being on quarantine. So also, the same-day treatment for us is a very attractive option in the current COVID nineteen era where we have staff shortage because very often the staff is being moved from the IT to COVID. There is a challenge in the HIV one and viral load. There is a challenge in the HIV one and viral load availability, especially in the current situation. So again, the same thing treatment with one day drug where there is no drug-drug interactions and which has similar efficacy across all the CD four and viral loads greater will be very attractive. And sometimes with restricted access to medical facility, you just need something which will work very quickly and efficiently where you do not need to worry about anything. So benefits and barriers for immediate treatment from our perspective. Less strain on resources which are now even more constrained than ever. No resistance and viral load associated delay, so we know that it will not be the issue. Increasing availability of drugs like, again, bictegravir, benofavir, alafenamide with fenterzidibin, where you have very little number of drug-drug interactions. On the other hand, we have tuberculosis and risk of iris associated with this disease which actually hinder the possibility to give us the drugs on the same day. Higher number of late diagnoses, so with a balance of a risk of opportunistic infection and thinking about the risk of a loss to follow up. But here, in this context, in some population, you can overcome it even on the first visit. So this is my very short presentation. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share our views.
So, having listened to all the presentations, I opened Q and A special session with Professor Johnson and Dr. Sacks. So I think if you have some comments before we proceed with the questions, I would like you to take a, take a, take a vote, take a speak for yourselves.
Why do you think there is so little transmitted integrase inhibitor resistance?
In, in, in central and eastern Europe.
Just globally?
I, so actually, the meeting is on the, on the antiretroviral resistance. Some of them, some of it is associated with recent introduction of this drug class, but some of it is actually associated with fitness effect, so some of them are being lost. And also, we have to remember that the efficacy of the current treatments with integrate, based on integrase inhibitors is actually better than some NNRTI treatments, especially historically. So I think this transmission is, is actually really infrequent, but I think it really needs to be looked for and checked in the future.
Agreed.
Margaret, you have something to add?
So, I mean, to add, I mean, certainly, resistance levels in the UK are very low, particularly really the almost non-existent integrase resistance in new diagnoses. So, you know, I think that starting, you know, on the day of diagnosis with, you know, an integrase based regimen is pretty safe. And I think the key is to be able to get that patient back quickly when you've got the rest of the results back and modify the regimen depending on the other results. I mean, I think we're lucky in the UK and in most of western Europe in that patient, you know, there is open access and funded treatment for all people with HIV. And I think, you know, that is, you know, clearly, you know, a huge benefit that we have and I think, you know, that's why we have good outcomes.
Wonderful.
What do you think, America?
Yeah, we, we have certain parts of the United States that, that have that kind of funding, such as the state of Massachusetts, where I live. But you're absolutely right, there are parts of this country where coverage for antiretroviral medications, while ultimately obtainable, is not immediately obtainable. And therefore, there are people who cannot start ART right away and have to wait for those benefits to come through. So.
And we don't have to discuss funding.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So we are in a good situation in this respect as well, because most of antiretrovirals are state funded. The gap is the illegal migrants. So in most of the central and European countries, you have to be registered within the system to receive antiretrovirals, but most of the countries provided free of charge, so the patient doesn't pay. But if you are unregistered or if you are illegal migrant, you will not have the right for antiretroviral treatment. Okay, so I will, I will go with questions. We have two questions. The first one is to Dr. Sacks from Kirsten White. So Kirsten says, thank you for the review. For us non-MDs, why delay for TB and crypto? Can you expand? And I have covered it partially in my presentation, but I think you can expand it further.
There was a randomized clinical trial conducted in Sub-Saharan Africa for people with cryptococcal meningitis and it found that the outcomes were actually worse for people who started ART early versus who delayed. And the theory is that this relates to immune constitution inflammatory syndrome. And further evidence for that is that the patients who did the worst were the ones with the least inflammatory response in the cerebral spinal fluid. So we tend not to start ART right away for cryptococcal meningitis. Our practice is to wait at least two weeks until after they've had induction therapy with amphotericin. TB meningitis, there were more drug-related adverse events for people who started early versus delayed, and that was a study done in Asia. In tuberculosis in general, we have to, of course, watch with her drug interactions with rifmycin and our most commonly used first day treatment is bictegravir F T C TAF in the United States and you can't use that with rifampin. So those are the reasons.
Yeah. Okay. So the second question which we have was something which I was wondering about and it's just put nicely in the words. So this is from Andras Christosomaou. If art is recommended as soon as possible, how does ART resistance testing fit in chronologically? Yes, and expanding this question, should we still do the resistance testing prior to the card introduction? So I think we could discuss it between ourselves, because actually, I think that in the rollout of PRAP, still surveillance on the resistance is very important. Because the more people on PRAP we have, the less risk that there will be nucleoside transmitted drug resistance. And we still don't know how it will affect the first day treatment, especially with dual therapies. But it's an excellent question. So what are your opinions on, on this issue?
I certainly think that we should still be doing baseline resistance testing. I think increasingly, in my practice, patients are moving to two drug regimens and I certainly would be worried on moving someone to a two drug regimen if they had some nucleoside resistance at baseline, at seven eighty four or whatever.
You know, from a, we, I collaborate with a disease modeling group and the outcome of the model that we did showed that resistance testing was no longer cost effective because the results so rarely changed what you did. The limitation of this, of course, is that it's a modeling study, that it does not consider two-drug therapy, which is dalutegravir lamivudine, and that it also doesn't take into account the benefits of surveillance, which is what Milos, you were mentioning before. That said, even though we did this modeling study, all of us still send the test at baseline because we, we like to have the information in hand. You know, some information is better than no information and it's so difficult to get resistance testing once a person is, has viral suppression.
So I think we will be moving away from the model, wait and treat, to treat and optimize.
Yes.
Probably even in the context of drug resistance in the future.
Great.
And I have a question to mark at, can I? Because we are almost finishing for time, because we have quite an increasing number of aging female recently diagnosed, like fifty plus, sixty plus, and this population is very difficult for us to convince and treat. Do you think such a population could benefit from the same day treatment or rather not?
And I would agree with you. I think that older female patients, you know, very often, the result is, you know, a complete shock. It's not something that they've, you know, considered, they don't know anybody else who's, you know, has HIV. So, you know, I think that very often, they, you know, potentially do need a little bit more time to, you know, think about treatment, engage with the service. I mean, I certainly think they're not, in my patient population, patients that we lose to follow up. So I would say, I can't actually remember an older female who started on treatment on the first day. Having said that, I can't actually think of any recent older female who's been lost to follow up. So I think probably just take it a bit more slowly. I don't know what you do and what you think and what Paul thinks.
Yeah, me the same. I, I try to discuss and encourage and try to relax and calm Paul's thoughts, because we need to run down.
You know, most, most patients want to start ART as soon as possible, but those who have reluctance, I agree, there's no point in coercing them. So, you know, the last thing you'd want to do is, is drive them away with being overly forceful, so.
I think the answer is to start very soon in everybody, on the same day if you can, but, you know, if it's another week or two, I think that it's best if that's what the compatience comes.
Absolutely.
Okay. So thank you. Thank you for this wonderful presentations. Thank you for this discussion and thank you for this educational event, which will now close. And we have ten minute break before the session to clinical management of HIV. Thank you very much.
Bye, thanks.